We'll go ahead and get started on the work session for December 1st. And again, like I said, we just had another executive work session. Now we're going to transition to this public work session. And the first agenda item is going to be the Guy Link Executive Director Abby, but I'm going to introduce Matt Miller, who is the project manager for the Jones County Guy Link Center. Is he present? Yes, I see him. Welcome, Matt.
Hey, how are you guys?
Awesome. Great to see you.
Yeah, thank you for the introduction. I appreciate you guys having us on tonight. We have Abby to introduce to you as the executive director. Before I did that, though, I just wanted to take a moment to give you a quick update on our current timeline of things. Our building construction is going quite well. They expect to be wrapping up around the first of the year. So, once we take occupancy of the building, there's still some work that has to be done. We need to get our furniture in there. The county needs to run its network there. And then we just want to give staff time to get in there and go through training scenarios and get comfortable and familiar with the building as well. So, we're looking at opening in February at some point. Tentatively, we're targeting February 8th, but that's kind of influxes. There's a lot of variables that are, you know, still have to come to fruition before we actually open. But that's our target date right now. And so, I guess with no further ado, then I'll go ahead and introduce Abby. So Abby Forenzy has been hired as the executive director, and she can give a quick update on her background and what's been going on in her world lately.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Matt. Everybody hear me okay? Okay, all right, sorry, had to, I was in transit, so I need to do this for my car. Very nice to meet you all virtually. Again, my name is Abby Forenzy. I have worked with the, I was previously the director for the Iowa City Mental Health Center and have been with, I've been with the Mental Health Center about six years now. But I've been in community mental health services for a little over 15 years. I've worked in a variety of roles, case manager, crisis counselor, housing coordinator, all of which I think have helped prepare me to take on this role, which I am exceedingly excited about. I was hoping that I could be a part of an access center when I had first heard about them. And so, being able to do that and to do that in the Iowa City and surrounding, with the surrounding communities, I'm just really happy, happy for the opportunity. So, just to kind of let you know where I'm, where we're at. I know Matt gave a brief summary. Right now, I am in the midst of coming up with a lot of policies and procedures, working with the four providers who will be providing services out of the Guide Link Center, which will be Prelude, Community Crisis Services, Penn Center, and then the Abby Mental Health Center. So, we're working on provider agreements. And like I said, those policies and procedures. I was just over in the building today doing a walkthrough, practicing some scenarios we might run into. So, that's what we're working on right now. I was able to secure some CARES Act grant funding for PPE and other tools that are going to help us operate an access center with all the challenges of a pandemic. So, I was, I was happy to be awarded that money, and I've ordered a lot of, like I said, PPE and equipment. So, staff and clients and whoever else may be in the building, so we can all be as safe as possible. So, that's just, again, brief summary of where we're at. I'm curious if anybody had any questions for Matt or I.
You, welcome and really happy to have you here. Do you know where things stand with the winter shelter this year? Because the Shelter House was the one organization you didn't mention.
Well, so Shelter House operates separately from Guide Link. So, I'm not the executive director over Shelter House. They just happen to be in the building next to us as well. So Chrissy Canginelli and Mark Satter, as far as I know, I have heard from them that they plan to open, I believe, they had said December, so I believe anytime now.
I can give you guys kind of an update, though. They're initially going to open up in the old Carquest Building by the county facility, where they've been the last couple of years. Then, as soon as we get occupancy of the new building, they'll move in there right away. So, really, I anticipate the start of January, they'll be in there.
Thanks very much.
Great. Thanks to both of you, and we're excited about the Guide Link Center.
Yeah, if I can just say one more thing. Certainly, this, this project has been a long time coming. We've been working on this for several years. And it's definitely getting hectic right now. And I just want to commend Abby on the job she's done. She's had an incredible amount of things thrown at her in the last six or seven weeks since she started, and she's handled it really well. So, if she can get through this, I have no prob, I have all the faith in the world that we'll be pretty successful. So, thank you, Abby, and thank you once again for you guys' continued support. And I'm sure we'll be talking to you guys again soon and giving you a tour in the very near future.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any, any other additional comments from council? All right, thanks, you too. All right, COVID-19 updates. We just had Thanksgiving, so, yes. Any thoughts there from anyone? And I do hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, even though it's different. I think just be mindful of, continue to be mindful of activities moving forward. I think everybody knows by now what the three things are that can help slow the spread. So, we'll just continue to monitor that. Our-
I just say thank you to everybody who's, who's wearing a face covering. Thank you to everybody who's doing what you need to, to help keep you and other people safe. And I think we've seen a number of articles recently in the media of people who just got tired and let their guard down, and it did not end well. Please, there is light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccines. Please keep it up, and thank you to everybody who's continuing to do what you need to, particularly on behalf of our healthcare workers.
Yes, well said. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to Black Lives Matter movement and systemic racism. Any updates there? I know that there was one update, which maybe we can bring it up now. It's in the info packet. I think it's November 25th info packet. No, it's in the formal agenda. So, and that is the, the commission, the HRC Commission. They had a recommendation to staff. I don't know if many of us read their recommendation, but it related to IFR having a seat at the table. So, I think we should address that, and we can probably do that now, if people want to have that conversation. I'm trying to bring up, okay, there. So, the true, the HRC met, and they did a recommendation to council, and I'll read what the recommendation was, specifically their wording. So, be resolved the IFR having a named representative, have a seat at the Iowa City Council, at the Iowa City City Council to participate in all topics related to the June resolution, subject to the mayor's direction, voted on annually. So, that is their recommendation, and I wanted to, I think we should have the discussion. And we did have this discussion, as they even mentioned throughout their minutes. They had a previously, and then it came up again when they received a formal, another request from IFR.
I'll start, I guess. As you said, Mayor, we had this discussion previously. And I don't have to say, my position on this has not changed. And I don't think that any of the circumstances have changed. I think the majority of us felt this way before. And I know you did, Mayor, and Supervisor Royce Ann Porter, who's been a longtime activist in this community, said the same thing. And that is, there's two really big issues for me. One is, I still am not convinced that IFR represents the broader part of our community of people of color. I guess I don't see how we can give them a seat at the table and not the South District Neighborhood Association, for example, or Black Voices Project, as another example. So, I don't see that there's any one group that has, that really shows me that they really represent that broader constituency. And I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we are listening to all of those people. We are, I believe, all of us are always open to, whether it's phone calls, emails. Even in this pandemic, a lot of us have had Zoom calls. And in the summer, we even had meetings out on the pender crest with individuals. And I think we're all still very much willing to do as much as we can, probably not out on the pender crest today, but, you know, with phone calls and Zoom meetings, et cetera. So, I don't, I'm not convinced that they represent that broader community well in terms of having that representation. And secondly, I think it sets a precedent that I would not want to be a part of, because then I think anytime we get to a bigger, more complex issue, we end up with the same thing of one group, one organization saying, hey, we want a seat at the table. And I guess I would just reiterate Supervisor Royce Ann Porter's words. If you want to see to a table, at the table, you run and you get elected. In the meantime, we are all, I believe, very much open and willing to conversations. And, and I speak, I think, both, not only for myself, but I believe for the whole council. So, I do not support the recommendation.
For me?
Go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
Oh, no, please go right ahead.
I was just going to say that I echo what Susan is saying, although I respect the members of the Iowa Freedom Riders and their opinions on things. I think, as she said, even Royce Ann Porter, who I admire greatly, says that. As far as, you know, if you really want a true seat at the table to speak on whatever issues that come before the council, you know, run for council. It's a great thing to do. But as far as one group having a specified seat at the table, there's, there's many other groups that have interest in items that come before the council. My goodness, and we listen to them. We've always listened to them. As Susan said, that's a big key thing is to listen, listen to people. The Hundred Grannies, for instance, you know, they've never begged to have a seat at the table, but they're, they're present when there's issues they concern, they care about. And goodness, the climate action folks, and they came and they spoke, and they changed. We turned around some things according to what, what they were saying. So, you know, and we have the listening posts. Also, we've had groups where if someone wants to come before the council and has a lot to say, maybe two people can consolidate their time, and so they wind up with nine to 10 minutes, one person talking, because the other person chooses not to talk then, because they have the same things to say. We've always listened. I think we've always given people time to talk. So, I agree with Susan totally on this.
I, of course, want to thank IFR again. As I've mentioned, they really started the ball rolling when it came down to council coming together and making some changes. Our resolution, yes, IFR came and they brought us some items, some demands, that it really put council in a position to really think hard and, and rather quickly about that resolution and how we wanted our community, you know, what we were going to strive for as a community. So, I do thank them 100% for that. My position hasn't changed on this, and it has a lot to do with, what is, you know, what is the role of council? Who is a part of the council? These are elected seats. And this is an opportunity for, when, when we're in our meetings, is an opportunity for, for people to come from the public during the open comment section, give their comments. Also, I noticed in the minutes that it was stated that council is hard to get a hold of and have meetings with. There is no conversation, and without that conversation, you know, a lot of things can't be accomplished. So, I know that this council had appointed two counselors, both Counselor Burgess and Counselor Weiner, to be the liaison between IFR and even the South District, as well as Black Voices Project and anyone related that was interested in the topic of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. But not only, it wasn't just limited to that. It was really limited, an opportunity for anything related to our resolution. So, I believe this council is accessible. I myself have, the members of the IFR have my number. And I have on there, especially with some of the younger people during, especially during the protests, I have on there must answer, you know, because I wanted to make sure that they were safe, and if there was a concern, I wanted to navigate that immediately, because there were some, some counter protesters out there. And so, for me, again, it's, it's not about not allowing your voice to be heard, because you are always welcome to this council. You're always welcome to, to share your, whatever IFR as a, as a group or as individuals want to share with the council. You, you're always welcome to, to do that. I mean, it's no secret that there's some, a few things that I don't agree with when it comes down to a few of the ideations of the IFR. But I won't let that stop me from working with IFR or any member with IFR. I truly appreciate and I thank you for all that you've done for this community, because you did, you started something that I am looking forward to continuing in my role as counselor and in my role as mayor. So, thanks to IFR. I do not support a seat at the table, as, as I think has been referred to at the council table. But you are certainly welcome anytime at any of our council meetings, and you're also welcome to call me directly. Many of you have my direct personal number. Use it anytime.
I would just echo what my colleagues have said and thank the mayor for stating it so well. I hope that IFR remains engaged. If we decline to grant this, this recommendation, we don't take up this recommendation. I absolutely know that those members who've been involved, those individuals who identify themselves as speaking for IFR will continue to be engaged. And I hope they continue to be engaged. And I hope that we have facilitated a process in, wherein so many different people can participate in local government and that we can be accessible in a way that I, I think really does credit our commitment to this process. Like the mayor, my cell phone number's on the website. I will take a meeting, phone call with, with really anyone. Have done so with IFR members repeatedly and will continue to do so. So, I hope those individuals who represent IFR will continue to be involved and keep holding our feet to the fire.
Yeah, I would agree with my fellow counselors. And frankly, I was a little bit surprised to read in some of the minutes from that HRC mission, Commission meeting that the sense that the council wasn't listening, because I certainly feel I, I, and I think everyone on council has really put really an extraordinary amount of time into listening and trying to advance the conversation. And I felt personally that we were making real progress on the policy matters, which I think is where we are at this phase. And if, if anyone with IFR or anyone in the public in general feels that we're not advancing the policy in a way that they're pleased with, I certainly would like to have that conversation. But I think thus far, it's, it's been productive. I've appreciated that, you know, what I've learned from this process, and I think IFR, I've contributed to their understanding as well. So, it's, I felt it was sort of a mutual exchange that was making progress in a significant way, and I hope it continues to make progress.
Me, my position also has in changed. I really support the Human Rights Commission recommendation to give the IFR seat at the table. IFR not only start the rolling the ball, but they continue like bringing all this issue and reaching out to civil groups in the community. Try to reach out to everyone from Black Voices Project to South District, to everyone. Try to include everyone. My position has in changed, though, not going nowhere. But I guess for the record, I support their, the Human Rights Commission recommendation.
I think someone, at least one person mentioned that our numbers are on the website. If I can't pick up the phone when someone calls and you leave a message, I'll call you back. If, if you write me an email, I will write you back. I'm happy to talk. I'm happy to phone. I'm happy to Zoom in, in groups or otherwise. What, I can really only echo what most of my colleagues have said. I don't support the seat at the table, but I do support continuing to talk and continuing to learn in both directions, because it has been an incredibly fruitful two-way street.
All right, any other comments there? All right, we're going to move on to clarification of agenda items.
I just had one question I noticed on the traffic calming 6D. You know, that the work had been completed. One question I had was whether we do a kind of a post-installation assessment of how the, the traffic calming elements have changed the, you know, the speeds on the streets where they've been installed.
John, I can probably confirm that with you before the, before the vote takes place tonight. But I believe that, yes, we will go back in and we'll do kind of a post-traffic assessment and compare the speeds and volumes with the precondition. But again, I'll need to just check with staff and verify that, and I'll, I'll let you know before that vote. Thanks.
Any other items on the formal agenda? Moving on to info packet, November 19th. I think-
Well, I would just mention the Climate Action Report, then, if nobody. Lot of good information in there. I would encourage people to take a look at that, their annual report.
Yep. And I know we got the, the city manager, Juneteenth holiday. And that was also kind of broadcast everywhere over Facebook and probably Twitter and some other city communication avenues. So, this is great, great news. So, looking forward to this holiday here at the city. Info packet, November 25th.
I did want to make a few comments on, on the IP7, the sidewalks, snow clearing guide that I sent all of you, and I hope you had a chance to look at it. This, this was, in a sense, a follow-up to the council discussion of, which was on October 20th of the 2021 ice and snow operations. And I just wanted to make some comments and, and offer something for your consideration. First, for those who are listening, who were not at that meeting on the 21st, or the 20th, rather, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for this. The curb ramps, there was some discussion of the curb ramps at that meeting. And the curb ramps are an essential element in providing universal access in the public right-of-way for pedestrians. And Iowa City has actually been very proactive in addressing gaps in our pedestrian infrastructure through filling some of the areas where our sidewalk network is not continuous, as well as disturbing, installing curb ramps in various locations. The curb ramps, you know, as a former landscape architect retired, they are a very complex feature in this pedestrian infrastructure. There are a lot of factors that come into play with how a curb ramp works in a specific location. So, they, they've been taken on by the city. The city does the design and installation and maintenance on those. So, the question that's, that came up was this matter of, you know, how do we deal with the snow removal over the winter months? And the sidewalks, as we noted, and this is really state code, the snow clearing resulting from natural snowfall is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner. And on the curb ramps, the corner property owners are encouraged to clear the snow, but the city doesn't have enforcement power over that. So, my observation, which I made on that night, was that our current approach is generally, in my view, from my experience and observations, it's not working very well. And it's, you know, it's a challenging issue. You know, the piles of snow that are left by our city snow plows is difficult to clear. And I think that contributes to why, you know, some property owners on the corners may, may do the removal. Sometimes they'll do it, and then the plow will come through again, and, you know, they'll have to do it again. So, it's, it's a challenging problem for the adjacent property owner to deal with. So, I, after that meeting, I continued to do some research on the question of how to remove that snow at the curb ramps. And I would add that it's, in my view, taken on an increased significance, because we're, we're living through COVID. People are sport, spending more time near their home. Everyone's at home with them, and so the, the need to get out sometimes by yourself for some relief tends to be in the neighborhood in which you live. So, eventually, I came upon that document, which I shared with you, published by the Department of Public Health, which is, which is in the November 25th information packet, for those who are watching. And that the guide included snow clearing at the corners, which were referred to in this guide as "snow windows." And it went on to say that the "snow windows" are especially troubling for people with disabilities, seniors, guardians with baby strollers, or pregnant women, as walking or rolling over piles of snow can be extremely difficult or impossible. The guy then goes on to say that some cities do their best to clear snow windows at the corners as part of their plowing procedures. And other cities have crews dedicated to clearing the windows after snow plows have cleared the streets. So, in, in reading that, and they give many kind of case studies of what cities in Minnesota, as well as other places where it snows, have dealt with these issues. And where I've kind of landed on this, after having read them, was that since the snow piles obstructing pedestrian access results from our snow plowing operations, I do think it's fair and reasonable for our snow clearing operations to include the corner ramps, which are constructed and maintained by the city. And so I would ask for your consideration and support of this change in our policy. And that we, we direct staff to revise its snow clearing procedures to match up with the, with this concept, which would be that the, the curb ramps be included as part of their snow plowing operations.
John, are you referring to all of them throughout the city?
You know, that, that's a question. And as you can see, there are. You know, there's, it's really an open field as to how we want to address this. You know, that, that may be something for our city attorney's office to, to weigh in on whether it's possible to identify priority areas where it would be necessary or something that we would do throughout the city. But my hope without, you know, having had a conversation with staff on this is that as much of this as possible could be accomplished through changes in our snowplow operations. And obviously it would take more time. But to the degree we could just simply revise our plowing procedures to achieve this, that, that seems like the most reasonable starting point. And you know, I, I don't know how you would make that priority, but it's certainly something that could be part of the conversation.
I just, I have to say my initial response is, is one of grave concern and I read the whole packet and it was, it was interesting to see. You know, that various places in Minnesota, and I, I think there were some in there from Wisconsin even wasn't there some examples? But I mean, same issues we've talked about and the conundrum you have of trying to keep these areas clear for anybody and everybody to walk, strollers, wheelchairs, people with canes, whatever it might be. But as I think about just the geographical area of our city and the amount of time it takes our crews just to get the streets plowed and safe for vehicular traffic. To slow them up to try and plow every single corner and intersection differently so that they don't plow any snow up onto the curb ramps. I, I'm just, I'm really, really hesitant about how that can be accomplished without one really slowing down the clearing of the streets and two significant, potentially significantly increasing the costs of snow removal. And at this particular time in the pandemic and not knowing what our budgets look like. I'm, I'm really, really hesitant about heading down this path. I think if we do anything, I think it has to be very focused on very, very heavy pedestrian areas. And, and we may even already, and Jeff can answer this, maybe already doing more in the downtown area on the curbs, et cetera. I hear what you're saying. I, I appreciate the problems for people with mobility, but I think trying to foist this entire responsibility on the city is going to be incredibly, incredibly expensive. And not necessarily what city residents are going to want to see when they see the cost of it.
I somewhat agree with you, Susan. I think it probably will be, would be something that would take more time and staff and equipment. And on those lines, maybe we could, I think we should seriously consider this though, and perhaps a trial. And you mentioned the downtown area, maybe in that surrounding area around there, we could try that. And I think what John was talking about in some of the other cities, they just, they actually have a separate, smaller plow that comes behind that, the big plow and clears just those walkways. And, and he mentioned how difficult it is to, to clear piles left by the plow. And having had to clear my driveway after the plow comes through and leaves those big, big piles of snow that get sort of packed hard. I can imagine it, it is hard to even clear the, the ramps if a person is abutting that property there and has to do that. So I, I think we should at least seriously consider it and even maybe start with a trial with some of the smaller areas of town.
If I can jump in, I'll just let you know what we're, we're currently doing. Started last year, we put more staff focus on the ramps downtown. So we do have staff that after their main plowing duties are done in the downtown parking and, and park staff, they will try to clear as many of those as possible. I can tell you, we have thousands and thousands of curb ramps and in a lot of those cases, you're not going to be able to drive a vehicle over them. If you think about older parts of town with, with really the, the smaller sidewalks and four, five foot sidewalk, you're not going to be able to take a vehicle over there. If you look at some of those other cities, I a lot of them probably focus on the, the very high pedestrian areas that probably have six to eight feet trail types of sidewalk. I think I saw in the Minneapolis version, if I'm not mistaken, that they only do it after four inches of snow or more. And, and in that case, even only in, in very targeted areas, but if we wanted to try to take this citywide, you'd be looking, I hesitate to even give you an expense, but it, it would be hundreds of thousands easily to, to do this, to do this type of work. We can't just adjust the way snow plower, snow plows drive and, and not put that snow anywhere. I mean, that's, that's a common question that we get because it, it frustrates people that clear their driveway and then the snowplow comes through and you've got to go out and clear the bottom of your driveway again. When you're moving that much snow, it has to go somewhere and it's going to go to the side of the road. So I, I would say that we're already doing this as best as we can downtown with our current resources. If you'd like to put more resources to it, we can kind of try to maybe give you some examples of what that looks like. We can contact some of these cities that were, that were pointed out and really kind of focus in on what their priorities are and how they do that. But I'd, I'd be prepared at, at expenses measured in six digits or more.
Kind of hard to gauge staff or how much staff you'll need for this as well. Based on how it's presented, if we were to, you know, service the entire community. But I do kind of like the idea of just doing a little research just to find out more about how the cities are operating. So that we'll have some, some knowledge of what's happening. Snow removal, as we know, it, it, it is a challenge for a lot of individuals, various reasons why. People haven't access, you know, usable sidewalks. We want to be a walkable community even in the time of snow. I think it, it, it has some challenges there. And if we can just do a little research, find out what other cities are doing, maybe there is a kind of an assistant, snow removal assistant program, we might consider if someone is on a main street, for example, and they're getting a lot of snow at their curb, which they have to, you know, remove that snow. I don't know the, the limitations of, you know, the individuals, maybe they have a limitation of not being able to do it or have to wait for somebody to come. And maybe that's where they call on the city to just assist with that corner. So I think there's some ways that we could look at this. And I, I'm, I'm not optimistic that we will be able to do all of the programs as they're listed here. But I, I thank John for bringing this to our attention because snow removal is a major issue living in the Midwest. So thanks for bringing it to us, John.
Mayor, if I may, I think, I think this might help. I'm going to share my screen for just a, a brief moment. Hopefully you can see this map here. This is a curb ramp inventory that we have on our, on our website and all these orange dots are curb ramps. So at any intersection, you're going to have typically eight curb ramps on a, on a standard intersection. This is College Green Park. So we're kind of in the, in the downtown central part of town. But as, as I zoom out, you will notice the orange dots grow exponentially. And you could just think from this area right here, if we had to have staff, even if you had a little, little like tractor type of equipment to get all eight of those spots at each intersection. That's a very time labor intensive effort. And then as you scroll out in the city, you'll just, I mean, you can see these orange dots just become huge clumps. And the magnitude of the issue is, is daunting. And I'm, I'm not saying that to, to dismiss it, but if you're going to be focusing on citywide efforts, this is huge. This is massive, massive type of undertaking. And I, I don't know how you, you know, we could. We can definitely present you with some scenarios. But I, I just not sure how you accomplish this citywide in any type of timely manner as well. If you, you know, you think to how we handle snow complaints on sidewalks. City, you know, when it comes to forcing the, the removal, we have to hire that out right now. And that's a pretty, you've, you've seen some of those bills on appeals for what private snow removal costs. And that's just for a couple of squares of sidewalks usually. When you start getting into more complex curb ramps that require more hand removal. Again, I just want to prepare you for what that, what, what that may look like.
I just wanted to throw out the, the ADA perspective. Because I guess, I mean, I understand this, that, that it's almost certainly not feasible citywide. But I wonder in addition, if in addition to the downtown, it would be, it would be feasible to look at areas around assisted living facilities or places where there there, where, where we know there are many people who, who need to take the seats buses and who may not literally be able to get out to the corners. Those are the places that are of real concern to me personally, in addition to what people can, can do themselves. But those are folks who need the, the accessibility and the ability to get down a curb ramp.
Jeff, I would just urge communication on this issue like, like we always do in asking for the community's help with this and, you know, appealing to those who can help their neighbors to please do so. And those who live on corners to please clear those ramps. I think hammering those messages, especially in the COVID moment is, is helpful. And I'm, I'm grateful to John for highlighting, you know, that, that issue as well. And Jeff, I was just wondering if you could remind us what additional snow clearing we're planning for this winter with the pandemic. I know we're doing additional trails and park areas or, and I think there might've been a press release about that, but just if you have a general idea.
Yeah, we are expanding the amount of trails that we're clearing and parkland, I guess that we're clearing typically will use, we'll, we'll have some of the non-heavily trafficked trails, just remain snow covered. Same with some of the outlined trails area. So a, a good example that probably everybody can picture would be Terry True Blood. We typically don't plow Terry True Blood recreational area. And, and people can use it for snow shoeing or, or winter walking, I guess. This year we will clear it to try to make it a little bit more accessible for, for people. So if you, you can drive over and, and walk comfortably along that trail. And there are several other locations throughout town that we're doing as well.
I just want to thank everyone for your comments and, and I certainly view this as, as the guide suggested, there's really a wide range of response, responses that cities have made regarding snow clearing, everything from not only doing the ramps, but some cities do the sidewalks as well. So it's, it's I think a, a choice that a city has to make. And clearly we can look at different approaches toward, you know, how to have the program match up well with our resources. But you know, there are many ways we could carve it out. It's, there are certainly parts of Iowa City that people rely more on walking than others that are more walkable. As Janice mentioned, there may be facilities that we want to try to consider our mass, you know, our public transit concept that we're developing. Are there certain routes that might be considered to provide better pedestrian access to those bus stops, which are another piece that, you know, I didn't really want to put it on the table because you know, it's sort of focusing on the ramps. But another question, as you saw in the guide, was the question of the bus stops. So it's, you know, it's one of those things where the, these issues all kind of tie together. And if we're trying to promote alternative means of transit, you know, as I've tried to emphasize, you know, there's always a walk involved with that. So it's not simply the ramps as sort of a you know, for, for pedestrians on a walk, it's also tying into our, our multimodal concept of mobility that we're trying to promote.
Great. Any other items from November 25?
So is, is the, I can't recall right now offhand, is the Good Neighbor Program also a portion, part of the regular agenda for tonight?
It's in the information.
Is it just in, in the November 25th information packet? Or it's not on a, because one of the, I just wanted to call attention to that briefly because it, it brought to mind some things that, that I've heard over sort of the past year plus of where where we maybe need to sort of sit down at some point with the, with the building committee, community and, and find out what what makes what increases the cost of building when we're taking a look in particular at affordable housing. What, what really does increase the cost? What could, what suggestions would they have that could decrease the cost? And I'm not saying that necessarily the, the good, the good neighbor meetings are, are a prime example of that. It just jogged my memory that that's something that that I would really value us as a council taking a look at, not down, down the road in conjunction with the, with the, with the community builders. As we look at affordable housing, what, what are the things that have been added to the code that, that they, they believe make, make things much more expensive to build? And where could we find some compromise?
Those are some of our pending work, work session topics. Especially when it comes down to discuss development of a new comprehensive plan to promote affordable housing. We also have the affordable housing plan. So I think you're on to what is definitely a hot topic here for council and our efforts to create more affordable housing. So I think as we move forward and even on some of our work sessions, we'll be having some of those discussions as well. Some might get altered and put into something different, but we do have some work sessions related to that on the pending, pending list. Any other items from 1125? All right. Updates on assignment boards, commissions and committees. I'll start. So today, actually I met with the Partnership for Alcohol and Safety. And that's pause for, it's a collective of university downtown district or the businesses in, in the community. Of course, the city, county. And so it's just a collective of people that come together and have discussions. And today we had a great discussion. There was a couple of presentations. The guy linked center did present and gave an update to us. So of course they were here on our agenda tonight as well. And then the downtown district did a presentation of reimagining downtown safety. And so they are continuing to have discussions on a, a variety of things when it comes to safety. And so that was a great presentation. And then we heard from the vice president of student life at the University of Iowa and, and what the discussion by her was it was reimagining campus safety action coalition. And so they have, have a, a group that is talking about the safety there on the campus. So there's a lot happening. And one of the themes throughout all of what was discussed was definitely being equitable and, and really considering how just, just having a good, an open conversation about race. And so and making sure that whatever they do is equitable. So I really appreciated those conversations today. And that's all I have to report there. and making sure that whatever they do is equitable. So I really appreciated those conversations today. And that's all I have to report there.
Check had a meeting last week, no, week before, last week was Thanksgiving. And has got their preliminary budget ready. So that should be going to, I think the Board of Supervisors, Tom Jones was going to be presenting that. So pretty much in line, we've got some major changes, if you will, just because of contracts being up on the radios and that makes a big difference as they go forward, but trying to make sure that we've got some consistency from year to year and avoiding some major spikes because of maintenance. So I just wanted just speak for Tom Jones. He just does an excellent job as the executive director at Jack. And really keeps us informed and does a great job with the budget as well. So we do have a, actually have a turnover in the kind of second command position. Individual left to take another job, which Brandon left, which is unfortunate for us, because he'd done a great job there. He was kind of direct oversight overseer for, I had oversight for the dispatchers. So a new position or replacement position there, but things are going really well. Budget looks good. Just some things with the, as we knew would be coming up with the radio contracts.
All right. Any other comments or updates? I did meet with Think Iowa City. We, we meet routinely. I'm on the, on the DMO Board of Directors. Of course, their year has looked a lot different when we're talking about bringing events to the community, but overall they are still in planning mode for twenty twenty one and remain an optimistic. So yeah. I'll leave it at that. Anything else for today? We will be adjourned until, until seven, which will be our formal meeting. And that will be on a, on a different Zoom link. So we'll see you all at seven.